Planning Commission meeting to order. Gentlemen, the first order of business this evening is to adopt the agenda. There are some matters I think we should discuss on the agenda. There are a few items that were not on the agenda when it was originally developed and distributed and have either been proposed for various reasons to be added to the agenda. I would suggest we discuss them in turn and then decide if we want to add them to the agenda before we adopt it. Does anybody have any issue with that?
I second the motion.
I'm not sure we need a motion on that particular issue, but why don't we just talk through them. So, the first item that's been proposed to add is the transient occupancy definitions. This is something that we've been discussing. And I guess there was a variety of communications about this that in the end it was not added to the agenda. I personally feel like if we do decide to discuss this, which I think would be good if we have, if we think of time and allow it, given that it was not on the agenda when the agenda was made public and given that we are missing two commissioners who are the only representatives of their respective districts, I would suggest that if we do agree to add this to the agenda this evening, that we add it as a discussion-only item and that we don't move to make those changes until it's been more thoroughly posted to the public and when we have more or less representation on the commission. Any other, any thoughts about that?
Well, I guess my total thoughts and everything is that we are missing several members tonight. And basically, anything that you discussed and referenced to the amendments to the agenda here will be items that will have to be, the other members next month will have to be brought up to date and educated on it. And I'm kind of in favor of going with the agenda as it was presented to us.
In other words, not adding these or adding these?
Not adding, go with the-
The original agenda?
Right.
Any other?
Every item we discussed and then somebody, multiple people will be left out.
Other thoughts, other commissioners care to share? Mr. Henry, your point, I guess, relates to all three of the proposed additions. Unless there are further comments on the particular one that I mentioned, transient occupancy definitions, perhaps we should talk about the other two as well. Commissioners may want to have individual comments on those. The second one is the first item under new business, discussion of planning and commission training. I believe, I understand what this is. This is to provide some additional information and recognize that there's funding available. Not sure precisely what that topic would be, but personally, I wouldn't be, have any problem with adding that to the agenda this evening. I don't feel like it's, as I understand it, I don't think it's something that we'd be making any kind of firm decision on. And it's more or less an informational topic, but I don't know.
It's a little bit more involved than informational, but it could wait till we have a, we don't know if we'll have it for planning commission next month either.
Would you like to add anything to that point, Mr. Fraser, or just to me to decide? To help us just understand better whether we-
Well, it was my recommendation to the board supervisors, you know, they approved it that we're going to ask that all the planning commissioners take the certified planning commission training. Planning commission training, and ask the judge, the city board judge to ask, and have the DZA take advantage of it as well.
Are they the same course or different?
No, it was a certified DZA member, certified planning commissioner.
Okay, well, so that's the second item of, Mr. Henry, you suggested we don't add any of these. I don't know if further clarification you-
Okay, and the third one?
The third one is the discussion of our September 30th work meeting. This too is something that has been thrown into some difference when it was proposed. I originally, I think, proposed adding this when it appeared that we would have an otherwise fairly short meeting and recognizing that it might behoove us to talk a little bit about how we want to approach that September 30th meeting, not to particularly make any recommendations to anybody, but to just be better prepared to make the most of that meeting. I don't have any particular plan to put forward, but it just struck me as something that might behoove us to discuss for our benefit and the benefit of the public before we just show up. Now, I understand the purpose of that meeting may have changed based on the latest supervisor's meeting, which kind of muddies the water there a little bit anyway, but that's what the, that's why the item is on the agenda. It's simply to take ideas and suggestions for how we might conduct ourselves during that meeting to make the most of it.
I thought the 30th meeting was going to be, was going to be working on the comments plan.
That is right, but I believe, if I'm not mistaken, that the board of supervisors also has tentatively called for a joint meeting under certain circumstances that day, so I don't know where that stands.
There may be a special exception application, I don't know whether that's going to be-
That's what I was referring to.
As far as the rules of what we do as the planning commission, with the work on the county needs to plan, I think, it's my feeling that we sit down as a group, figure out what we're lacking. Because we are going to need additional information to complete the document. And I think we pretty much, we can know where we have to go to get started, is what I was thinking.
Well, that's an example of the kind of thing that I agree it might be helpful to speak about before we get there and start that discussion. And so, again, I don't, I don't feel the same way about either of these two new items as I do about the transient occupancy definitions, where I think there's really a potential, you know, vote on a potential change to our ordinance, which strikes me as inherently more significant than the other two items. And therefore, I feel more strongly about that one not being fully added to the agenda than I do the other two. So, with that, unless there's further discussion, I would entertain a motion on this. Would anybody else care to comment on the, or ask any questions to clarify what is being discussed here with respect to the proposed changes to the amendment?
So, what, so we're hopping around, so what are we doing then? We're going to discuss all three in line?
All we're discussing now is whether we are going to change the agenda to add these items.
Tonight.
Tonight. And having now, I think, discussed them enough that we at least understand what they are, I would entertain a motion to either add or not add any one or all of them to our agenda as we adopt it, before we approve, you know, before we adopt it.
Well, none of them are action items. So, they're just discussion items, we'd be discussing them before we take action on them. I see no harm in adding any of them.
Just give them more, I don't believe.
I mean, that would be my suggestion that we, the only one that you actually take, taking any action on is the discussion of what we're going to do on the 30th.
Well, Mr. Henry, I want to clarify that, Mr. Fraser, it sounds like you're, I mean, if we fully address the transient occupancy definitions, we, if we took it on, we could, without agreeing not to, we could, we would potentially vote on those. Are you suggesting that you agree with me that we, even if we discuss them, we shouldn't vote on them tonight? It sounds like you are, because you-
Well, I, I mean, that's, that's a zoning ordinance amendment. So, that and this adaptive use, all those are going to have to be published and advertised for a public hearing at the same time. So, I don't know that one, the precedent of having one over the other, we're going to have several items to have a public hearing on.
But we would still be voting potentially to recommend those changes or not recommend. So, that to me is a-
I would think it should just be a discussion item, add it for discussion.
Yes, I agree.
Hopefully, the rest of the planning commission would be-
Before we actually vote to recommend anything. I'm, I'm in agreement with that. So, anyone care to make a motion on the agenda, or if not, I would propose one. But generally, I think it would be better to entertain a motion from the commissioner of the office.
So moved to add these three items.
I will second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you then, and then why don't we go ahead then? It's not particularly necessary, but why don't we vote then to adopt the agenda as amended? All in favor?
Aye.
So, we now have our agenda. So, the next item on the agenda is to approve the amendments from our last meeting. I'm sorry, minutes from our last meeting, we've got amendments on the last. Before I ask others for comments, the only thing that I noticed was, I believe, a missing close paren on line 24 of page four, should be 10 with the numerals in parentheses. But other than that, I didn't see anything. Any other additions, corrections to minutes? If not, could I, someone make a motion to approve?
Somebody, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. At this point, we'll open up for the first comment period of the evening, this being a general one, where you should feel free to comment on anything that's on the mind this evening. We will be, as is our practice, having a public comment session around each of the, certainly the, I guess the right thing to do now, if you add these things to the agenda, might be to allow a brief public comment associated with the other items as well. That would be my preference at least. So, certainly doesn't come unwieldy in some fashion, that's what we'll plan to do ahead of each of those items. But for now, if there's anyone who would like to speak, please identify yourself, your name, and your district, and put on your comments. Yes, over here.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Tourism and agriculture are the two big, more big engines that are in Rappahannock County. And they don't forget it this coming weekend for the eighth annual farm tour of Rappahannock County. There'll be, I guess, 15, 18, something like that, farms on the tour. The brochures are available with the schedule of locations, map, and so forth, all the information at the visitor's center. If anybody wishes to stop attending one of the individual farms, I think they'll also have the brochures so you can pick which ones you wish. May I, Caladonia Farm as an example, we'll have representatives from the Division of Forestry, State of Virginia, Smithsonian Solar, Solar Solution Installers. So, there'll be kind of emphasis on environmental considerations of agriculture and violence. And you're all invited Saturday and Sunday, the hours are 10 to 5 Saturday, 11 to 5 on Sunday. And the weather forecast looks pretty good, and we hope to see all of you, in the audience and also members of the commission, because agriculture and tourism are going to be your considerations for many years to come. Also, on Friday, the 30th, right after your workshop, which you called until 5 o'clock, starting at 6, will be a starry skies festival, which is promoted by the Rappahannock League for Environmental Protection. Here in Rappahannock County, I've said for many years that many people have seen the Milky Way for the first time here at Rappahannock. We had dark skies, we still have dark skies, we hope to continue to have dark skies and see the stars. One of the suggestions that I made was that the world is getting brighter, but the universe is still out there and is waiting for us to dim the lights and open our eyes. And I hope you'll do that with us on Friday, the 30th, 6 until way after dark. The schedule of events will be in the Rappahannock news tomorrow. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Anyone else care to comment?
Hi, Yoko Barsky, Hampton District. While I was looking at the comprehensive plan, and at the end, there is a map of different districts. And the last one showed the commercial districts that included a way up into almost to half property line. And I brought it up to Mr. Henry, who's a ten shows, since he's my district, and he's told me to take it up to Ms. Kaiser, which I did. And I was told that that map was wrong, that the commercial district does not go that far. It's been my concern, and I don't know if the planning commission have been working on it. It's part of your primary task, right? Planning commission's task to work on the comprehensive plan. And I just like know how it's going, you know? And I'd like to have that map changed, because it's online, everybody can see it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else, sir?
Paige Glenny, Jackson District. At Monday night's board supervisors' meeting, Ms. Kaiser passed out a handout of interpretations and clarifications to Zom. Please take one and pass it on. Although, Mr. Fraser, you probably haven't seen it. I request that you all specifically take this as an action item to review and provide comments back to the board of supervisors. Personally, I think there are some items on here that blow the comprehensive plan out of, and our vision for the county out of the water. I would also like this to be actually recorded in minutes or copied out in minutes, because it wasn't on Word docs as part of the board's surprise meeting. And I want this on the record, that someone supplied all this. Again, my primary request is for you to review these and see if, as you as the body that writes ordinances and makes the comprehensive plan, is this consistent with what you were thinking? Because this is the way she said, she's applying the ordinances. Okay?
Thank you. Any other comments?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, David Conick from Stonewall District. I want to chime in on what you said about the agenda, because I have to admit, I'm being pretty confused. I mean, I looked at Word docs, the meeting, and then I got hearing about the agenda. And as you pointed out, there's, well, I really don't care too much about the training, but transient definitions, I didn't know, I didn't know about that until I got here, and I did not, I mean, I looked at it either yesterday or Friday, or Monday. And I didn't even know what that encompasses, so I don't know what to say, because I don't know what it is, and I guess there's other people maybe feel the same way. But generally, I just want to say, I wish that the commission made the same request to the supervisors. Would supervisors have something in the county code that their agenda is supposed to be set a week before the meeting, it's supposed to be published, but be sent to the Rappahannock News? And what's been happening lately, and I don't know if Word docs has, has been an improvement or not, because what happens is, you look a week or so, or five, six days before the meeting, and there's such a bunch of stuff on there, and then Monday or Tuesday, the day of the meeting, you look on it, it's all changed. And so, it makes it, I mean, I, you know, try to keep myself informed and try to make some constructive comments, but it's not fair to people if they don't know what's going to be on. I don't know what the policy is or should be, but at least you ought to have some policy with some kind of notice and stick to it. And I just think it's unfair for people common. So, the thing that I, that is on the agenda that I knew about, and that is the adaptive use proposal that is before you. And I sent a memo, I think, last, or before last month's meeting, and I know you didn't finish your discussion of it, so I guess it's going to be a continuation of tonight, but there's two items that weren't discussed last week or last month, because you didn't get to it. One is about the issue of the transfer of the property that, in other words, the person that applies to the adaptive use can't be the person that built the thing. So, you can't basically circumvent the ordinance by building some thing and then come whine about it and say, "I can't use it for its intended purpose." And that's pretty much what is, I think, the intent of what is written there, but the loophole of it is, it doesn't have any clause or, you know, explanation or restriction that whoever applies can't be a relative or an LLC or a legal entity that is owned or controlled by the whoever it was that originally built it. Because then you could easily get around that restriction by just setting up a corporation or LLC and transferring the property, and then come in and whine that you can't use it. So, that was one thing. The other thing is about the revocation or termination part, just, I call that like a sunset provision. And it says in there that if anybody gets an adaptive use, and then they violate the terms and conditions of it, or what's in the ordinance about it, or any conditions that are put on it, or if they discontinue the use for, I think it says one year, then it's subject to revocation. And I think that it ought to be made consistent with the amendments that were doing or proposed on the table anyway for the ordinance in general. Really could leave that out, because those, those who want to cover it. But I think it should be just terminated, the same way a special use permit or special exception permit terminates if you don't do the use within one year. This should say, just because, basically, politically, I think, as you all know and have seen, I don't think the board of supervisors or the board of zoning appeals has ever, to my knowledge, maybe one time, I don't think they've ever revoked anybody's permit, even when there's been some pretty egregious violations of the terms and conditions. So, I think you ought to look at that anyway, and my recommendation would be, first of all, they discontinue the use. I mean, if they take some old house and turn it into a restaurant or a retail shop, and then they don't use it for a period of time, whether it's one year, two years, whatever it is, then their adaptive use permit should just terminate. It's a special exception, they should just terminate automatically, without having to have somebody come in and say, "Aye, we should revoke it," and then you have to have a public hearing, and it's a very cumbersome process. And frankly, I doubt that it doesn't really do that, I mean, really go through the process. So, it ought to be along that. That's what I'm only commenting on the substance of those two things. I think you agreed to put a date in there, or it had to be the date of the original zoning ordinance, but honestly, I didn't see that in what was on there, I'm not sure if that got in. The other thing, there was something that, there was a, I can't remember what subsection it was, that Mr. Brady had suggested about the opportunity to repeat their investment was taken out, but now there's like the beginning of that sentence, and it just says they should have an opportunity, it doesn't say to do what. So, I think they, I think it was, you're supposed to strike the whole thing. The other thing procedurally is, I don't know if you're going to finish that tonight. I would agree with those who have said you ought to wait for the other commissioners to come back. And I know the other, you know, my favorite list of amendments is not going to be discussed tonight, because they're not here. And I thought that the intent of the board of supervisors, when they sent all this stuff over, was that we'd have one added, one big public hearing for all these amendments at one time, and not have to do it piecemeal or in two different hearings. So, I would hope that you would, if you don't get to it now, that you would at least wait till we get to the other list and finish that. I think that's going to be one more meeting, and I don't know if you want to take that up on the 30th or not. I'll be glad to be there if you want to go over it, and that would be helpful to the board. I think it ought to all be, have a, set for public hearing all at one time. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Any other comments? Again, recognizing that we will have a comment period for each of the items. Hearing none, I formally closed the first public comment period.
Yeah, just for clarification, I heard Ms. Barsky's request, and she has talked to me, what she's talking about. It's the general overlay district that is in the comprehensive plan, and that is on my list of things that we can talk about. So, I know we have a number of things, and we're going to talk about our schedule on Friday. We can add that on Friday, or add that at another time, but it certainly is on the list. Second of all, Mr. Conick's comment about the transient occupancy. Mr. Conick, those are the names that were given to your amendments, so that's referring to what you talked about. I think Candy may have called them a different name, but you had requested that they be on there. And I had said, I didn't put it on there, because we had two commissioners absent, but you asked her nicely. So, I put it on as a proposal for the board to adopt, and they did adopt it as a potential discussion item tonight. So, that, those are your amendments, so that you're aware of them. And then, Mr. Glenny, I agree, the board of supervisors stated that the planning commission was to review what he handed out. I was not going to do that tonight, because we've not had a week's notice. We've had Mr. Conick for a long time, it's under Old Business. But what we talked about at the board of supervisor meeting was on Monday, so you had not had a chance to review it, and it will be on the agenda for next month. So, with Mr. Glenny handing that out, if you'd like to talk about it, feel free to call me, or otherwise, it will be on the agenda for next month when all the commissioners are here, and we can talk about it, so.
I believe that the board of supervisors wanted to get serious talking about it at our next meeting, so that's why we wanted a few comments of competitiveness.
If you want to add it to the agenda, but I did not do that, because it was such a late date, and it was, I had, we had already put the agenda out, so technically-
There's not really an action item for this, for this body, because we're only an advisory body to start this, so I think it wouldn't hurt, provided we're not going to be here all night. But I think it would be good if the commissioners could just kind of weigh in on it, at least a couple of them.
Well, I think it'd be nice for them to get an explanation, so that they have time to look at it. But I did not do it, since it was only a couple, two days away from what was handed out.
I understand, we probably went a little too good the other night, we don't seem to remember the way that we started this.
I don't see how we can weigh in on this right here, without, without more study other than that. There's a lot of things here, a lot of paragraphs, a lot of technicalities that we read in comments and current interpretation. I can, I'm not able to comment on these things.
And not to be, you know, too tenuous about it, but it's not on the agenda, it's still not on the agenda. So, it really got no public scrutiny, and I understand the time pressures, and we desire to kind of synchronize these things, but I agree that I don't think we would be adding much value by kind of reading this under the hot lights and trying to comment it as we're reading it for the first time, so I do, I appreciate, I think this gives us a heads up, something we can read and perhaps get closer to. Some of this could be, I suppose, I didn't know, for example, if this overlapped with any of the other proposed changes, and I suspected it might, so we could end up backing into some of it, I guess, in the other items on our agenda. But at this point, I don't intend to add it.
Well, some of it is, is actually addressed in the new amendments that we will be discussing.
Okay. Anything else, Ms. Kaiser?
No, sir.
So, moving on to Old Business, first item on the agenda is special use 160701, McCrea's Torres Town. I believe the applicants are here. Remind me, do we call for public comment first, or let the applicant speak as a matter of tradition? Thank you. You didn't even close the public comment. I thought I did. The public comment period, if I hadn't closed it, it is certainly closed now. Oh, I see, the public comment is closed. Whether we close it or not, we'll have another one, so I'm not sure that that makes-
There are generally several public comment periods. The first public comment is a general one, and the second public comment would be on this particular question. The second public comment would be on this particular question.
I think the point is that because this is an old, yeah, I think because it's an old business item, technically, we wouldn't be compelled to have another public comment session on it. But as I noted earlier, I think it's my intent to do so. Sorry, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Commissioners. My name is Taylor Riddam, I'm representing the Coontzes on their application. At the last meeting, the application was tabled due to a number of concerns that the commissioners had. In your board packet, you'll see that these concerns were addressed by line items in my letter to Ms. Kaiser. There were concerns about meeting with the neighbors and working towards a road maintenance agreement. In your packet, you'll see that there is in fact a recorded road maintenance agreement that the Coontzes are bound to. They're bound to pay contributions to the road, to the maintenance of the road. And you'll see that by Mr. Todd Brown is mentioned in that road maintenance agreement. And you asked for a confirmation that there was a 50-foot right-of-way across Quon Lane. There is in fact a right-of-way in the width of 50 feet across Quon Lane. And there's a portion of that that goes to the Coontz's property that's technically not Quon Lane, but there is a 50-foot right-of-way on that portion as well. And there was a question of what the property looked like. You had asked for some property pictures. In your packet, there are some pictures, they are in black and white. However, on four docs, they are in color. And they kind of give you the characteristic of the Quon Lane. As you can see here on the back in color, this is Quon Lane leading up to the Coontz's property. The road eventually curves slightly and goes through some trees. And then in the next pictures, you'll see that view down the corridor of trees. And you can see here, and then past that van that's kind of parked in the road, to the right of that is where the Coontz's gate is that leads up to their property. So this is looking back through that, through that section of trees. And that's kind of cars, that car is the one that you saw that was parked closer to the road. And that sign in the back, what looks like a little white sign is the marker for the entrance to the Coontz's gate there. So you'll see you'll pass by this property. And then this property owner had levied some concerns about dust that had been traveling to and from on the road. But I think the amount of dust that is generated is actually much less than if the property was used full-time by a primary residence, a primary resident. There's also a concern as to the back lodging taxes. And from my discussions with zoning commissioner Debbie Kaiser, she said that the Commissioner of Revenue cannot establish an account into which the Coontz would pay back taxes until a permit had been generated. So upon a generation of a permit, they would pay any back lodging taxes that are owed to the county based on the number of people and nights that they've had guests stay there. Also, the Coontz have, the Coontz has offered to limit the type of rentals on the property. They've offered to limit the rentals to no more than four separate rentals per month, as well as there were concerns about fog and snow during winter months. And they've also offered to limit the property rentals such that the months of January, February, and March would not be used for short-term rentals for their property. And also, just to follow up with a point about the comprehensive plan. The Coontz's application is in line with the comprehensive plan. It's bringing tourists into the county. Some tourists that might not have an opportunity to stay in the county now have an opportunity to stay if the Coontz's were able to have their property available for short-term rentals. And the more tourists to the county, the better. The more tourists that are able to attend all the wonderful vineyards and commercial operations and see the beauty of the county, as well as attend the farm tour, the upcoming farm tour. If you would permit me, Julie Coontz would like to say a few words about her application.
Thank you for being here any nights. We've taken a lot to heart from what we've heard over the past month or so from our neighbors as well as the Board and the Planning Commission. We've gone out and we've met every single neighbor on our street, every person on Quon Lane, as well as the road above us, which is directly adjacent to our property, Quon Lane. Everybody with the exception of the two that you occurred from have agreed to it. You have, it's either been verbal agreement or a signature agreement, which you all have in front of you. All of the verbal agreements, we will continue to work to get their physical signatures. But I believe that's up to 14 unique signatures with regards to the two that you had against us. Again, I just want to note that this is functionally no different than if we're staying, this is our vacation home. We're here about once a month. If we weren't here during those ti, the weekends, we would have friends there. And that's functionally no different than when we're doing on Airbnb. It's vetting people, it's a highly vetted system on Airbnb. And it's really no different than our friends being there, if it might change his hands or not. I take accession to some of the prior notes, that statements that have been set up in the community, that we are not members of the community, that we are absentee owners. We live in Cochran County, we're one county away. We are 40 minutes door-to-door away from our house in Chester Gap. We attend Chester Gap Baptist Church. Our child has been a teacher for Gibson and Talented for the last four years. Her teacher is a community, in the Chester Gap community. She's the pianist at Chester Gap Baptist Church. Her father, her husband is the minister of Chester Gap Baptist Church. We recently had a house fire in January and before we even owned this property outright. And Chester Gap Baptist Church contributed joy to our children after that fire. So I take a severe accession to saying that we're not members of the community. And that we are absentee owners, because that's simply not the case. It is very much our home, just to know what our mental work on this.
Thank you. With that, I'll open a public comment period. If anyone would like to speak on this application, I would ask that you direct your comments to the commission and also limit them to no more than three minutes. If you're here to speak on this application. Okay, then I will hereby close the public comment period on Special Use 160701. And, I guess, Ms. Kaiser, would you?
I would like to add to the record that we have a letter that I don't have enough copies of, that I just got, that you can pass down a couple of them, that expresses another sentiment and neighbor that supports the Coontz's Tourist Town.
Just, just a quick, can I clarify there? In the letters that Ms. Kaiser's referred to there, three letters, as well as a, another signature letter with a few signatures.
Mr. Berg, may I begin as you're in at the table?
You certainly may. I feel that this application is a very reasonable and positive use of the property and the community. And that I feel that the cost of it, as they have expressed, is probably less than a regular daily rental or occupancy of the property itself. And that I would just like to add that I feel that there is, for some reason, that I don't understand a, what I feel is an unreasonable fear and concern about short-term rentals. And that in my experience, this has been going on in Rattahannock County for quite a while. And I don't think there has been one instance where there has been a problem or a difficulty as a result of one of these rentals. And so that's basically my appreciation of the situation.
Thank you, Mr. Berg. Mr. Berg?
Thank you. Do you happen to have an open building permit up there? Did you take the, start those modifications to the porch, you don't have handrails? Yeah, but I can put the permit with those porches and the stairs.
Uh, we purchased it, so we can do that with all planes. They have our absentee notice.
I think we're gonna have the building official look at that before you have an actual permit. You've got, you've got one part of your railing off the porch missing, you've got the cinder blocks. Was that the wrong house?
No, it's, I've finished, the porch is unfinished.
And you're missing several other handrails up here. Looks like you've been doing some work up there then without permits.
We haven't done any work.
You haven't done any work?
We purchased the home from someone else.
How long ago was that?
Uh, they acquired ownership in June.
I saw the timeline there, but it looks like your names were added in for, you've been part of it for a while.
Right, but we weren't, anything had been done to the property, I'm worried about that.
There's some unsafe conditions. I didn't make it up there the last time I, you know, before the last meeting, I had concerns that were maybe getting raised in. I certainly couldn't, wouldn't expect us to recommend approval with the handrails like that.
Can I make a comment just on that? Would you?
Chairman.
Oh, Chairman, Mr. Chairman, a minute, a comment. Would the, would, would the commissioner recommend that it be approved if the building permit was in full order as to the railings and as to the concerns of the porches? Because that might be something that we could put in affirmative, and then affirmative would be issued upon the satisfactory building.
If I may, any, we, it's within our purview to put any conditions such as that that we might on a conditional approval. Not that that would necessarily satisfy you, Mr. Berg, but I think that would be consistent with our usual approach to the situation.
Yeah, it's, it's several, several speculations there with the rails and the porch.
And so, so could we put in our recommendation that the property fulfill all of the code requirements of the building permitted in order for our recommendation to be proper?
To be a condition, just as we often require we do for public health provisions or other conditions.
Sure, sure.
I think we could. I don't think we're quite ready to entertain such a motion, but when we get to it, I think that's within our options. Mr. Berg, are you finished?
I guess that's, one of the major concerns that I saw was that as, as unsteady as I am sometimes, I'd go right off the porch a couple places.
Well, it's, it's a very reasonable concern, and I'm sure the owners would have the same concern.
Mr. Brown, anything to add?
No.
Mr. Henry?
I guess a couple of things here. When I look at this, I don't know what you call this, this item here, this document, where, because I met Bob and Julie Conix in Quon Lane, I understand they would be willing to offer their home and contribute $200 to the ground. I don't know quite what this is because they got their addresses here, the people that signed this. And you have a person from 201 Chester Gap Road signed it, 24 Rock Ridge Lane signed it, and another person from 46 Rock Ridge Lane. Do all these people own property in Quon Lane?
They're, they're adjacent to our property, they'll see.
Do they all join, do they all use Quon Lane?
Three or four signatures on each Quon Lane and one on Quon Lane.
Three or four?
Three or four.
And which ones don't?
On the street and one.
No, so you got one, two, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven. You got seven names on here.
There's 14 unique homes, if you do a search of nearby neighbors of our address, these are, there's 14 distinct entities. And these are all the 14 that come up. And it's directly everybody on Quon Lane, which is 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8 distinct households.
And you just told me you got 14.
There's, that's on Quon Lane. And then the other exceptions of those are on the above road, Rock Ridge, which are completely adjacent. You can walk them, our property is there.
So tell me this, if you have a complete, correct, executed road maintenance agreement, is everybody that uses Quon Lane on this document?
There's a road maintenance plan, but only three contribute on all the streets. So we have one, but four persons contribute. The other five people don't even contribute to the road maintenance plan. Yeah.
I had a discussion with Todd Brown, who I know through the Fire and Rescue Association. And it's my understanding that he owned all of his property and he's the one that sold it. He still has the right-of-way from Quon Lane all the way back to their property. So Mr. Brown has been fixing the road and taking care of it and funding it. Some of the neighbors helped to contribute. So he is willing, and I had a personal conversation with him, he supports their efforts, but he is the one that takes care of the road and will take care of any donations that the neighbors are willing to give.
So legally, Mr. Brown owns the dirt of Quon Lane.
That's my understanding.
And then everybody else has a right-of-way to use Quon Lane.
Right.
So, so you really don't have a completed document unless you have everybody that have used Quon Lane legally executed. The fact that Mr. Brown owns the dirt on the Quon Lane doesn't really mean nothing. Because everybody else has a right to use Quon Lane. And therefore, if you don't have everybody signed on the road maintenance agreement, you don't have a complete road maintenance agreement. Correct? Is that correct?
That is correct. There's the road maintenance agreement, a lot of the residents in Quon, some of the residents in Quon Lane refuse to sign anything, they don't want to be held legally liable for, you know, monetary contribution to the road maintenance agreement. However, that has been shared by the residents of Quon Lane who have willingly signed the road maintenance agreement. And from my understanding, Mr. Todd Brown has been, he hasn't had to enforce any of those road maintenance agreements on anyone. He hasn't had anyone refuse to pay anything. Everyone that's contributed to that road maintenance agreement, he has used that for gravel and supplies for his equipment to maintain that road.
I guess, I guess, Mr. Odom, he was doing a title exam on this property for a lender. And you had to issue a title opinion on it. Would you say that this was a valid and enforceable road maintenance agreements against all people in Quon Lane? Yes or no?
I would say no, it's not enforceable on all the residents on Quon Lane. However, just a caveat on that, if the lender was very aggressive, they might be able to enforce some sort of contribution through the circuit court system for, for gain benefits without a contribution. So if someone were very aggressive, they would likely be able to get some sort of contribution from the residents who do use Quon Lane.
These other three people that sent in letters, it looks like one of them has a Washington, Virginia address, another one has an Amos Hill address, and the other one has a Flint Hill Island Road address. So they're just basically three people in the county of Rattahannock that have sent out letters.
That's correct. Those are people who would like to have been here tonight to speak in favor of the application for the Coontz's, but they weren't able to submit, submitted letters in their absence.
And in terms of working on this application, you make the comment here that, you know, we couldn't collect back lodging taxes because it was not a permit, approved permit, account set up. And I guess, since you're very thorough in the presentation here, you would know probably how many nights have been unpaid for, probably the amount of money that would be anticipated by the county?
I don't know personally, however, the Coontz's on their Airbnb account. They can see every activity that has taken place on that property. And I'm sure that they would be able to provide a printout of their activity.
I'm just, I'm just curious, how many nights are we talking about?
It's approximately $215, which is 2% of the.
How many nights?
15 nights. Approximately $120, 2%, I think is the correct cost of tax. But I actually tried to come in after the last planning mission meeting and tried to pay for it yesterday. And that's when I discovered that I couldn't actually pay it, we had a number. And I tried to. And I tried to recamp the payment, if they would offer a second advance.
Well, if she turns it down, we can take donations anytime.
I wonder if you can pay it in advance and rear, however you guys.
One, one more title question, just kind of pacing this thing together. Is it, my understanding that from Route six ten all the way in Quan Lane, Lane to the applicant's property, it's a fifty-foot right-of-way, the total way?
Uh, through the total, through the total way from six ten to the applicant's property is a fifty-foot right-of-way. And then technically, Quan Lane ends, um, just before the, the coonsees gate, and there was a, a, a clarification asked in the same title, you'll see, that I think it's the Chislen, or property, they granted a fifty-foot right-of-way to make it consistent with the end of Quan Lane, to make sure there was not a fifty-foot right-of-way, when the truck took a twenty-five foot right-of-way, they just wanted to make it consistent all the way through.
Anyone else, Mr. Henry?
No.
Uh, just one clarification on this, and if it's too complicated, I'm not sure how relevant it is, but with respect to the maintenance agreement, does it apply to Quan Lane, or does it also address that piece that extends from Quan Lane to the property?
Um, I think, I think my, my understanding is that the, um, the fifty-foot right-of-way, I'm, I'm.
You're on the maintenance agreement?
Yeah, that's.
Fifty-foot right-of-way, so.
Yeah.
I just wonder if there's, well.
I know the topic I'm always making, so, either way.
And maintain, I mean, my, my general view, um, I understand Mr. Brady's coming from the perspective of legal, legality of it, but for me, the issue of the road maintenance agreement is less about the ability to hold others accountable and more about the, the need to have them be accountable, so the fact that there are four who signed it, who are gonna pay. In fact, this business would presumably supplement, uh, in a way, the, uh, the actual maintenance of the road. So, seems to me that while there may be some legal issues with respect to title exchange, I'm not sure that those are germane to the point at least that I was concerned about with respect to the maintenance of the road.
And I think if, um, Todd Brown, if he said, well, hey, I'm not responsible for this portion, there's a twenty-yard portion where the coonsees are responsible, I'm sure they would, um, tell equipment, I mean, with Todd Brown, he seems very commensurate to, um, you know, take care of the road, so I'm sure that's something to be worked out. As to whether a question of, of, um, Todd Brown, his, his rights and his enforcement of the, of the road maintenance agreement.
Thank you. Uh, my other comments are, uh, I appreciate the effort that you put in since the last application to, uh, uh, both reach out to the neighbors, do the research, and also, uh, uh, offer some additional limitations to address some of the concerns that have been raised. Uh, I did take the opportunity to drive up there recently, I think I met your mother-in-law, um, somebody, anyway. You know, to me, the issue with, uh, a lane, uh, first of all, there's two considerations to me. If it's confusing or complicated, and one might reasonably expect that somebody wouldn't be able to find it, and a neighbor would be subject to sort of unnecessary hassles of people trying to find it, I didn't see that here. I think in terms of safety, the visibility and clearance on the driveway, with the exception of some cars that probably are routinely parked a little into the road, um, you know, it seemed pretty straightforward to me. Uh, I would also note that, and it doesn't directly apply here necessarily, but, uh, as the applicant noted, a, a, a use such as this that rents the entire property to the same number of people, uh, at the same time, who would be there if it were a monthly rental property, uh, in my view, is what defines a tourist home, and it essentially is still a lesser impact than that same household being, uh, filled by permanent residents. Um, I take that, uh, as opposed to a B and B, a real B and B, where there are multiple parties coming in and out, uh, at different times. Uh, so I don't know if it's something to agree with, but this to me is, uh, you know, something that with perhaps the conditions that, um, Mr. Brady has pointed out, I would very much support it. As, you know, I guess one of their comments and some sort of going on, you know, we talk about, uh, encouraging economic development, and we often talk about things that sort of aren't here, that we wish we were here. Uh, I think we also need to look at the demand for things that are here and are coming here and are growing here, and for which we have a great competitive advantage, like, uh, weekend getaways, and embrace them both for their, uh, uh, food and lodging tax contribution, as well as the, uh, addition to the, uh, property tax base associated with these weekend homes as they get improved and used in this matter. A broader pitch. With that, I turn to the board, or the commission, if anyone would care to offer a, a motion on this matter.
Mr. Chairman, uh, Mr. Brady, since he's not here, did he forward any comments or thoughts he had on?
Not to me.
No, he did not to me either.
He talked to me about it, and basically, with the issue of the road itself. And in my opinion here, you know, you've got a partial document, you don't have a completely legally forcible, forcible document to everybody on Quan Lane, and if everybody has not agreed to, uh, a road maintenance on Quan Lane, then there's issues there that we haven't heard about, the reasons why, whatever reason why they won't sign one, because of course a road document agreement, maintenance is beneficial to everyone. So if everyone has not signed it, there's underlying reasons here, we've heard the surface of it, we don't know the whole story of why everybody won't join into this document. Uh, so I guess going to your argument about less use, you know, that's the same argument that got us into the harmony, hall, hall, harmony, uh, manner mess, in that we turned it down, Alex Sharp says, well, you know, they will have, uh, if they have the spread and breakfast up there, it will be less used than what they will have by a, for example, a winery or vineyard up there, which is about right, so therefore, we should go ahead and approve the B and B, which he got passed at the B and B.A. So I don't necessarily agree with it's less traffic, because with traffic, it becomes issues. I, I didn't see the leaks here, who were very vocal here about their, uh, opposition to it, I don't see where they joined in into.
It went right past their house.
Yeah, it goes right past the house, I don't see where, you know, they joined in with any type of acceptance here or any agreement. Uh, you know, a, a partial agreement is, is not a legally binding agreement here, everybody has an ownership interest in that road. Uh, and, you know, we're subjecting our interpretation onto their community, and if everybody doesn't go along with it, we've heard the opposition that night, we've passed some letters here to support, um, you know. Here again, it, it's on a private road, we've had issues with these things on private roads, you've got the van sitting in the car on, on, on the right-of-way. This is on State Road, we've had some legal enforcement to remove that van, and they'd off the right-of-way more. Here, you don't have it, these people have been parking the van, they're changing the, the standards up there for the way the community's been living. Uh, you know, the people bought a residential unit, they did not buy a, uh, necessarily a, uh, I don't know what you call it, a.
Multi-use.
A multi-use, a, a single-unit hotel, motel.
A transient rental.
Right, transient rental, you know, they didn't buy that, they bought a residential use in a rural area, it's in a private road. I think we should, uh, look at the fact that, uh, we don't have a completed executed, uh, road maintenance agreement for everybody, set some standards and, uh, road maintenance agreement completed for everyone, uh, I don't think we should go along with the application.
Well, the, the next step would be B Z A meeting, that would be another week, did you make a recommendation that the B Z A?
Well, what, they, B Z A can do anything they want.
I know, but we can strongly, uh, recommend that the B Z A give, uh.
Mr. Conicus here, he'll transfer, and, and Mr. Bird is here to.
Well, yeah, I know, but I mean, we need to put something in writing that they, you know, take a strong look at the fact that, uh, whether they have those, uh, missing two signatures by then, and, and the stipulation that the building code requirements be enforced.
It, it seems questionable to me to hold these owners responsible for other people on the road who are not cooperating with the people of the community on road maintenance. And it would be one thing to say that the present owners couldn't use it if they didn't participate in a road maintenance agreement. But it's seems unfair and unreasonable to deny them access on their right-of-way because other people aren't cooperating in the maintenance.
We're not, we're not denying them the access to the property, we're just potentially denying them accelerated, more intense use of the property. We're not denying them the use that nobody, everybody else on that lane has the same use that they have now. They're asking for a longer ten shoes, and we're potentially denying that. We're not taking away anything they don't already equally share with their neighbors in terms of access to property. We're, we're just putting, we're talking about an increased use, if it was not an increased use, and more potential issues here of conflict occurring, then we wouldn't be, this wouldn't be subject to a permit.
Well, is, is it reasonable to think that it is a, an increased use?
Yes, it is.
Well, I think it compares to your baseline, compared to, uh, you know, a weekend home that isn't used, uh, compared to one that would only be used by them when they can get here, um, I think it is, from practical standpoint, though I, I agree with Mr. Bird, uh, and I think your comparison to Harmony Manor is, is, uh, there's a lot of differences there. Uh, this, and again, it comes to the difference between a B and B, where they're really having people coming in, going in different, different groups, in different automobiles, at different times, uh, in numbers greater than the, uh, numbers of the family that would otherwise live there. In this case, it's either these two and their mother-in-law and their grandchildren and children, or maybe somebody else and their two children, or two other people without a, the mother-in-law and the two children. So, to me, the baseline is, a reasonable baseline would be comparison to the same property, uh, if it were occupied by the same set of people in a, in a full-time basis. Uh, with respect to the, uh, the notion that some, some of the neighbors, uh, haven't approved, I think that's setting an awfully high standard, that, that we would deny something if any neighbor could, could, uh, uh, didn't go along for any reason. I think it's incumbent on us to certainly listen to the neighbors and listen to the arguments that they make, and consider the issues and the concerns that are raised in it, and whether, you know, they strike us in the balance of trying to get the rights of the property owner to the rights of the neighbor in check. I don't think that standard is, uh, you know, there were two neighbors that didn't go along with it, therefore, we should automatically, uh, deny it. I, I think that's a.
Well, there's nothing in the world that mentions a baseline, and there's nothing in the world that mentions a baseline, no discussion about a baseline. And, uh, um, every time you have new, I, new, new renters that come in to this property to use it for whatever time, there's an educational process that those users go through, you know, the people on the lane, uh, whether an issue of pets walking in the lane, uh, people and neighbors having dogs, all these kind of things, a whole educational process that goes through, uh, with every tenant coming in. And I don't think it's, it's correct, it's one thing if you walk on six ten out there, there's a public highway, there's a standing back here, but I think when you walk back here on, on Quan Lane, which is a private road, it's belong to all the neighbors, you know, to, to subject them to educating in whatever form it may be, uh, the tenants that come in there on a regular basis, I don't think it's, it's, it's correct to put that burden on them, because Mr. Odom himself said, this is not a legally recorded road maintenance agreement. The road, if you don't have a legally recorded maintenance agreement, you don't have anything, period. It's a legal issue.
And how do you create a situation that the coonsees can enforce the maintenance agreement on people who don't wish to participate?
We, we said last month as a condition suggested to them to go get a road maintenance agreement. If they come back with a road maintenance agreement with all the people signed on it, then I'm hunky-dory with it. Lest that, you don't have anything, you don't have nothing.
In your interpretation of the condition, it wasn't, it wasn't mine. To me, the issue with the road maintenance agreement, as has come up in other places, is that the, uh, you know, in the absence of a road maintenance agreement that contemplates this, that it could be that, that other neighbors who are, um, liable for some of the road maintenance would be subject to extra expenses because of the additional use of the property. I don't see that situation here. As I noted earlier, it seems to me that the situation that's up here, unlike the valuation of the title clearance or something, the issue here is, would this use, um, add to the maintenance costs of others on the road? I don't see how that's possible. It seems to me that this arrangement is more likely to have this operation subsidize the maintenance of the road. Uh, so I understand that it's not a, it's not a slam dunk, um, but I guess I don't see it quite the same way that, that, that you do. Any further discussion? I, I'd like, uh, certainly we still, uh, you know, certainly can discuss this more, or it's before or after. Perhaps we have a, a motion and a second, but I would still, uh, look to my fellow commissioners for a motion.
Yes, I'd like, Mr. Christian, um, just comments, please.
I believe comments, please, I'm sorry, if we don't have, if we have questions for you, I can, I appreciate if you address them.
So you're looking for a motion?
Looking for a motion.
I move that we approve this application.
With any conditions?
I, I would suggest that the building, uh, the, the, what would you call it, the, uh, building, uh.
The house be subject to inspection by the county, uh, building currently of current code levels.
Okay, the building code be, uh, approved by.
The current code be appro, confirmed by the inspector.
Approved by the, uh, building inspector.
We have a motion.
Now, Mr. Bird, would you like to include the various other things that they said about the restrictions of their, our months of operations and things?
Uh, I, I think that having, uh, proffered that, we could, uh, include that in to the.
So that would be, uh, more than four separate rentals per month, and no transient rentals thirty months of January, February, March, if I understood that correctly.
Now, now, may I ask a point of clarification? Is four rentals per month, is that four one nights? Four rentals of six days each, four rentals of eight days each, or seven days each, or how is that interpreted?
I would assume that it's rental transactions which are, you know, they're, they're rentals, it's the whole house, it's, you know, forever many other days, you know, and these things just aren't rented that long. Um, four separate rentals per month could be, you know, four weekends, or it could be four weeks if they were lucky. Uh, I don't, I think that's, I think four kind of probably coincides to the typical number of weeks, you know, in a month, give or take.
Do you want to subject the neighbors to thirty days of rental, Mr. Bird, or you want to subject them to eight days of rentals, or what?
I don't feel it reasonable that the county be required to assess how many days, how many, uh, how long the occupancy is, I, I don't see how that can be enforced. Uh, I feel that if we take these people, uh, in good faith to do what they say they're going to do, that's the best we can ask.
For, to me, with respect to the four separate rentals, you know, they've offered it, I think it's a, a reasonable check. It's, if, if there are complaints, uh, I don't think, I think you're right, the practical matter on a routine basis, it's hard for us to acknowledge, but, you know, in the event that there are more challenges and more difficulties than, than we're envisioning in our approval, um, and those are aggravated by, you know, and we look into it further and find that there are more than four rentals in a month, I think that gives us an additional, uh, length to stand on with respect to curailing or limiting the operation. Gentlemen, we have a, a, a motion, uh, on the floor. Care of the second?
Go ahead, second.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I offer a vote, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much for that. So your next stop is the. So, your next stop is the... Gentlemen, the next item on our agenda is the adaptive use consideration. While maybe against better judgment, I promised earlier that I would open up a public comment period for each of these items in the interest of greater transparency, so at this time, I would ask if there's anyone who would like to make a brief comment on the adaptive use provisions before us, they do so at this time under the same rules proposed earlier. If seen none, I'll close the public comment period on the adaptive use provisions. Gentlemen, before I open this up, I think as has been noted earlier, there were a couple of changes I did. Okay, there we go. So, the version on the screen matches my understanding, and again, I'm sure we all heard exactly the same thing after that lengthy discussion last time, but I believe what we had wished to have that item 170-69B read was that it referenced the structures that existed on December 1st, 1986, the effective date of the zoning ordinance. That was the date that I saw in the version online. I noticed that the version I have here actually has a 1987 date, so, you know, I think the only issue that we left undecided was what was that date of the effective date?
There was a document in eighty-six, but I can't give you the line.
Well, the table of contents of the online version has that date, so that's where I got that.
It may have actually been late eighty-five, but it wasn't eighty-seven in that.
So, there was that change. I also agree that there was still some editorial change on item G of page two. I believe, just from a editorial standpoint, the sentence should end after, at their own cost and strike the opportunity as well as for a reasonable return on their investment.
Yeah, it doesn't say anything. To allow property owners to what? You know, we closed, you know, the...
The way I read it, to allow property owners who are willing to undertake the preservation or rehabilitation of existing structures at their own cost, you know, that probably needs to be a comma, comma or something in there, that may not be grammatically how it's intended.
Really, I don't, we could probably expect the whole sentence as we suggested, I don't know why it would need to begin here.
I don't disagree.
The things that have been going on the last couple of board meetings, board supervisors meeting, this one statement we make under adaptive use, so not five residential structures, I'd like to see that in three or four more places scattered throughout it, so that it's pretty plain that that's what it means, a month from now, six months from now, ten years from now.
Well, Mr. Fraser, if I may, the other comment I was going to make before completely turning it over was that I did notice that under the definition section of 170-8, the definition of adaptive use, as it currently reads, is any special exception use conducted in accordance with the provisions of 170-69B, generally the use of a dwelling or other building built prior to 1940 for use other than as a single-family dwelling. So, I agree that it makes no sense to have the definition explicitly refer to a dwelling and then the condition be limited to non-residential. So, I think if we were to be consistent, what we would do is scratch the, is edit that adaptive use be any special exception use conducted in accordance with provisions of 170-69B, generally the use of a building built prior to the date that we put up here for use other than its original use. I mean, I believe that would be consistent with what we've changed elsewhere. That's the only other place that I saw.
Make sure that it doesn't, somebody doesn't get the wrong idea that it refers to dwellings or residences.
Only to dwellings. Other types, is that what you're...
Well, yeah, I mean, one of these days, of course, with so much money in it, we like selling Monticello, but maybe they need a good school, they might sell one of the old ones. But, or one of the packing houses, but, you know, these large dwelling structures that are being put up, we don't want to see them put up and then turned into a adaptive use.
Yeah, to me, it's interesting to see this definition because it sort of points to what I think the original intent was, and it was precisely so that some of the big old houses that are no longer practical in the county, they're going to be converted to bed and breakfast and the like. You know, I feel, I still feel like personally this is overkill, that having a date certain, which I think is critical, circumvents any such, you know, bait and switch notion of somebody building something and then coming back in.
It didn't at FT Valley, we said nineteen forty and...
It was already built, that's not the scenario that you seem to be concerned by. You seem to be concerned by a situation where somebody goes out and builds something, transfers to another use, or somehow comes back in after...
I guess what I'm really concerned with is we need to put it in there often enough so that nobody makes mistakes later on.
Okay, so, in this case, which is the date that you're concerned, would it be pre-40, pre-zoning?
Well, I could live with eighty-six, but I suggested nineteen sixty-six also because that's the date of the first zoning ordinance in Rapid Lake. Or you could use fifty-four.
Gentlemen, we discussed this and voted on it the last one, really going to open up and re-litigate the entire set of things that we discussed last time? We went through this, and with all due respect, you know, I thought we came to a compromised conclusion, and is that, you know, is that really the intent to, you know, go back through and replow that entire field?
No, I don't want to refight any vows, I'm just want to make sure that we're not going down a road that you will regret all these days.
Well, I think that's a pretty tall order.
Adaptive use and B and Bs are actually two different things, I think. I mean, residents can still be, you know, obtain a B and B permit after meeting other requirements, roads and things like that.
I mean, frankly, the more I look at this, the more it seems almost percolous because all of the explicit uses are already covered. This seems to be a way to allow some additional uses that aren't otherwise allowed to be allowed in the special circumstance of a historic building that we otherwise wish to see preserved. By taking away a date that indicates a historic building, it seems to me we've eroded that purpose. And it also seems to me that by making it nineteen eighty-six and making it non-residential, we're, we've kind of limited any extra advantage there is to having a special adaptive use provision. And at some point, if we narrow that additional benefit so far, it becomes pointless. So, you know, to me, as we've toned it in, I'm not sure it still has any purchase of...
You know, this adaptive reuse has only been used two or three times in the last ten or twelve years I've been on the board. And each time, it's been used correctly. And it's just been an oddity the last time on FT Valley store, it was an oddity. And what we did there was correct, and what the board did was correct. And so, we're just tweaking this to make it more acceptable to have an issue like FT Valley grocery that comes up again. I think when we did a number of years ago, the Packershead over there at Foster for Dan Clark, that was a perfect example. And we tweaked a date here, we made it clearly that it's not a residential property we're dealing with. I think that really solves, you know, most of the issue, you know? And we bring forward enough, not eighty-six.
Well, I disagree, FT Valley stretched, the board supervisor stretched and twisted it a little bit.
Well, you know, but still, it was the right thing, it came up with the right use of the property from the zoning category. You know, the legality, you may have issues there with the technicality, but it was the right thing to do with that property, I mean, versus tearing it down or just letting it be abandoned. I mean, this adaptive reuse right now, probably too far gone, but maybe Lombardi's, the old Lombardi's restaurant around there, it was a perfect example where an adaptive reuse could be, could have been applied there. Or one of the mills that's dilapidated now around the county could apply to them, you know, it's, you don't have that many situations about using eighty-six, you know, nobody's done anything planned in the last thirty years, you know, in reference to trying to sneak around this ordinance with this adaptive reuse. So, I think it's all works out pretty nicely, and we could talk about how to prefer it all night long, I think it could happen, but, you know, it just needs a little tweaking, we don't need to go back and talk about the gents with everything in this thing, you know?
Well, I think one of the aspects of any zoning special request is that the zoning laws don't necessarily fit perfectly, and so it's a question of bending or amending or working around a ordinance that doesn't actually accommodate the reality that we're dealing with. So, there's always going to be that friction, and I happen to think that Mr. Henry in the situations he cited is absolutely right, that the, a reasonable and profitable use of the structure was accommodated and the community was better off for it. And that, it doesn't seem to me that it gets much better than that.
Consistency and follow the ordinance consistently.
No, there's always, I think you're right, there's always a certain amount of judgment for things that come before us. It does seem here, though, that we're making a specific reference to existing structures. Originally, I think it was intended for more historic structures, we're maybe stretching that a bit, but, you know, I'm fine with that.
Mr. Fraser wants to add something else in about strictly residential, let's do it and move on with this thing.
I just think that we need to make sure that it says it enough times that it's not misunderstood later on.
Okay, Mr. Henry, Mr. Fraser, my suggestion is we've got the verbiage that we've put here with respect to non-residential structures that existed on December 1st, 1986. I believe we can address that by inserting that exact definitional language in the definitions. Any special exception use conducted in accordance with provisions of 170-69B, generally use of non-residential structures.
Not generally, not generally.
The use of non-residential structures that existed on December 1st, 1986 in a manner different from their original use. If we put in the same verbiage that we have there in the definition, does that satisfy you?
Yeah, under adaptive use, if it could read, any special exception use conducted in accordance with 69B, which is what we're working on.
Right. And then we would restate...
And strip the word generally out of that.
Okay.
And take the, and the use of a, well, just say with the provisions of 170-69B, any non-residential building built prior to 1986 for use other than a single-family dwelling.
Exactly.
And in that way, it's covered on both ends.
And it's consistent.
And generally's not in there, so we're not arguing about generally six months or three years from now, whoever's sitting in these positions.
Okay, I think that's workable, let me just clarify that, make sure we have it. Would you want to... Would be any special exception use conducted in accordance with the provisions of section 170-69B involving the use of a non-residential structure that existed on December 1st, 1986, effective date of the zoning ordinance in a manner other than its original use?
In a manner other than its original use.
Well, that's what makes it...
Let's just leave it like you have it up there.
Okay, is there really additional for...
No.
So, like you have it up there.
Just leave it like it is, that's clear.
That's not the definition, that's the, that's, I'm referring to the, it's, it's repeated in 170-8 under the definition of adaptive use.
That's what I want, eight.
170-8.
That's 169B, yeah.
170-8, right at the top. Adaptive use, special exception.
I guess, yeah, okay, yeah, right, strike it there.
No, I'm sorry, it's 170-8 definitions has a definition of adaptive use, so there is another area that needs to be revised to be consistent.
Right. I don't think that's supposed to be a B, I think it's supposed to be a hundred.
Yeah, it would be...
All the definitions have a B.
I'm sorry, the, Mr. Johnson, please. This is not the definition section, this is the additional standard section. This definition section is 170-8, it's not in this document.
Yeah, it's one, that's correct, Mr. Chairman, it's 178-B, but it reads under, it starts out with accessory use, acceleration accessory use, and then it rolls over to acre and adaptive use, so that would be correct, 170-B, but it's not numbered once it changes pages. So, that would be it, we need to have it spelled out there.
Okay, I'm confused by the, why there's a B there, too. So, this is, what we're doing is this is not contiguous sections, I see, I'm sorry, it's excerpted twice, so what we have there...
Yeah, so we need, we need to change that to what we just agreed to. That right there should read, any special exception use conducted in accordance with provisions of 170-69B which follows below that. And then, what we're using here, our current 170B, we strike the language that says generally, runs all the way over to, then we would say 169B, any building built prior to 1986 for use other than a single-family dwelling.
Seems to me that what we can replace is, we need to replace an existing structure with an existing structure, an existing non-residential structure, or a non-residential structure that existed on or before the 12/7/1986, and then we've got it. The only thing that's ambiguous there is the reference to simply an existing structure in the definition. If we replace that with a non-residential structure that existed on December 7th, 1986, I think, I think it's good to...
Well, while we're here, what does that do to 170-36, anything?
I don't think so, this, that refers to the zones.
It's special exception all the way across every zoning district that is out there.
And that's, that's given the, that deals with the zones, this deals with the uses, I don't think it necessarily changes something that I see.
It doesn't alter that, so that, that can stand.
I know we want to, Mr. Fraser, I'm sorry to interrupt, are you finished?
I think so.
I guess another point that was raised in the public comment, I do agree that there's no purpose in that potential confusion by having a different termination or relocation provision here. This is just a special exception or special use permit, just like all the others, so I guess I'm, I don't know why that would be different.
Well, we're talking about sunset provision in the list of, the other list of amendments that we have, I think all of them do sunset.
They have to be, but it should be their own, so I personally agree that we should not be trying to repeat that language all through the code so that we get in trouble by not keeping it consistent. Seems to me we set those provisions for special use and they apply to all manner of special uses, so...
Yeah, as long as we can do that, then we're fine.
I think that's...
I think it's, I, I don't, I would, I guess maybe the trailer has a mission review, but I, I don't even know how we would address how many B and B permits have been issued over the years that are not active, but yet their permits are still valid, which is something that none of us were really watching for, that we assumed.
It would seem to me the only way you would find is by monitoring the taxes paid, the meals.
But those are the only ones that are active. I'm talking about what, that are inactive. Well, a bunch of them that were issued that are inactive but are actually still valid.
Well, they're only valid for what, one or two years?
No, that's the problem, we always assume that, it's not in there.
Oh.
We need a sunset because it's going to drive them, them nuts in the zoning office trying to figure out.
Who's doing what?
Who's doing what? And then, and then if we can't find a paperwork, they could draw up one, they could generate their own with a computer and come in and say they've got a B and B. If we don't have the record, who's to say?
The property transfers and we don't have any way of knowing that, there's not coordination between.
We've lost the enforcement, maybe just because we all assumed that was in there and it's not in there.
So gentlemen, I think the matter before us is that we, I think, agree that the special conditions for revocation or termination or expiration of the, of the permit that are articulated in section eight and nine really should be the same as those for all other forms of special use permits. So we could either agree that that's a change we will take up when we address that issue, or we can grapple now with, with trying to come up with that language. I personally don't feel like I'm prepared to do that. I'm prepared to agree that it needs to be changed to be consistent and be specified only in one place, but I think to try to hammer out that language here now would be pretty painful. Yes, in the proposals we have, since there's a section, proposed section for revocation. And there's expiration, yes, it's in, it's on, it's, it's, so this kind of leads into our next topic, but perhaps since we're on this, maybe this is a, something we should work out and as perhaps our last order of business on this matter. Have the commissioners had adequate time to consider the proposed language with respect to expiration at one seventy dash sixty E and revocation at one seventy dash sixty-one A?
How is an extension acquired or doubled?
An extension?
It, it says, within one year after the effective date of such permit or exception, unless an extension shall be granted by the BCA or board because of conditions unforeseen at the time.
They would come back before the board and request it. And there's not been one.
If it's not commenced, if they don't commence construction or whatever they have to do.
Or they don't finish.
Right, they don't finish what they need to do, then they would come back before the board and ask for an extension. And that's not happened in the two years I've been here, but that's what they would need to do, is to come back before the board.
So gentlemen, with respect to the proposed provisions on the table of transient use changes, there is an item related to one seventy dash sixty E expiration and that's seventy dash sixty-one A revocation. I'm looking back at my notes from my original review and I personally find those changes to be helpful and constructive and we suggest that they be helpful in the adaptive use and every other kind of special use or special exception permit.
Moving forward, those could.
Sorry, Mr. Fraser?
It wouldn't be able to be retroactive, it would be going forward from that page.
Well, I, what I would suggest tonight, if, if there's no further discussion, that we kind of tentatively agree that that seems right, it sounds like, if I could review where we are, we agree that it should be in one place. I've read this and think that the proposed language is good, perhaps others haven't. Why don't we leave it at that and say that it is our intent to reconcile this language and make it apply to adaptive use as well as all the other special exception and special use permits? Would that satisfy the commissioner?
That's very reasonable to me.
Thank you, Mr. Fraser. Any other comment on this topic? In the interest of time, I'm going to suggest that we, and sort of energy and focus levels, I have, we've, we've been able to touch part of the transient occupancy definition in that conversation. I know that we added two other agenda items. I would suggest, unless there's any objection, that we move on to the other two items and review business. Hearing no objection, then let's talk about the planning commission training. Mr. Fraser, would you like to?
Again, I, I don't have the ability to send the link or anything, I'm kind of limited with my technological skills, but it's, it's the, you, you make, we attend.
Is it the same, is it the same thing I was trying to?
Well, it's, it's not, that, that was a seminar and that could have been part of the, the certified planning commission training, but it, it's, it's a course and generally how it works is, you know, revolves, I mean, it revolves around the state, different places, I think as far south as I've been is Roma, but, and they've had it in Williamsburg and Richmond. And it's usually you, you attend one wherever it is and then you take, you know, a stack of books home with you, you're supposed to read all of them. And attend to other jurisdictions, planning commission meetings near your area, and you do all the casework that you're supposed to do, and you go back the next time, it may be in Williamsburg the first time and Stanton the second time, and, and that's when you, you go through the, the other set of courses and do your completion. And I think the BCA course is very similar. I think what Mr. Chandler put on up here, I, I wasn't able to attend that one, but it may have been the same thing, it may have been here several days in a row and had the same, same curriculum.
Yeah, it's not, I, the, part of this discussion that's kind of lost me a little bit is the reference to certification. I, I know that course, I did take the course that Mr. Chandler put on here. I do believe there, there was a testing, so to me, the question that has yet to be answered, and maybe you're answering it now, but I'd like to get you to clarify what's being proposed, there's, I believe there's a series of trainings that are associating, certified trainings that are associated with the planning commission, but then I think there may also be a certification for.
A certi- a certified planning commission.
Yeah, certified planning commission. So I guess I'm wondering if that's the.
A buck fifty gets you a cup of coffee.
But is, but are you requiring a cup of coffee or not?
We're not requiring a cup of coffee, but I think we really ought to, because unfortunately, I, I was among the people that, that felt victim to, to, to happen. We put a lot of, we just put a lot of emphasis on Mr. McCarthy doing quite a few things and we felt lax in our duties, I believe. I believe that we should, should strive to make sure that doesn't happen in the future when there's a vacancy that exists, that, that doesn't create something like a turnover with all these different boards and bodies.
Sure.
It probably wouldn't have happened if he hadn't have been clerk to each one of them. We were a separate clerk, but we relied on him as the zoning administrator and the clerk. And he did, he did more work than he should have and we did less. This is to correct that.
So as I understand it, there's been money budgeted for this. I'm still a little unclear on exactly what the level of requirement and what level of training is, but.
The board has approved funding for it, I think, in the next, well, I mean, we have agreed to do it, but it should be done on October third.
I mean, it, it seems to me that this, I don't know, it seems to me that this is a decision that's for the supervisors, I guess from my perspective, in trying to add some value to this, I'd like clarity on, you know, whether it's a requirement and which sort of, which courses are required and do we have to get the certification or take the training, or is this just a strong suggestion? As it's been discussed, it seems to me.
Strongly suggested if we want to be appointed or reappointed.
Well, I believe, I don't.
Well, I think, I think, you know, we can talk about this and that, but I'd like to see specifics, okay?
Yeah.
How many, how many hours, how many hours, you know, and when, and, you know?
Well, if we can get enough people to commit to it, he can do it closer, he said Middleburg or, or Warren.
I guess what you're saying, the board supervisor says it's mandatory, so it's like we're all taking if you want to stay here. Okay, so it looks like, it's like who wants to stay on the board who doesn't? Show our hands and then you're out of here.
And you can have any color car you want, as long as it's black.
Right, right. It's like, it's, stop on here, so go ahead and tell them to bring stuff on. Give us specific dates and costs and whatever, you know?
Well, once we have, yeah, if, if we have a number of permits that he can.
Well, it's either all of them, I mean, it's, it's, you ever want, Mr. Ray, you're going to do it?
Well, I only got two years left.
So you're saying you are or not?
I've done it up once already.
Seems to be.
When I came onto the board, it's a two-day original. Then you take the books home, study and answer the questions on the test, and you go back for one more day. So it's a three-day thing, but split, two days there and now, and you do all the work on it.
That's, that's the way it was, what, fifteen, twenty years ago?
That's trying, that's not sort of.
Sixteen years ago.
If, if I may, I think, well, I, I think if I may, what you're hearing, I don't think this is a decision for us. I think that the supervisors have discussed a requirement. I think obviously we need to meet the requirement if we want to stay on. I, I think the discussion here is, and I would suggest that you take back that we would like those specifics of whether it's required or not, required for what, whether we need the certification, how many trainings, in what timeframe. I think that's the feedback that we're in position to, to get.
I'll get you a better breakdown of the courses and the, and the timing, and if, maybe we can work with the town, if we can get enough people together, maybe another locality, they would do it, you know, put it together somewhere closer. He, he sent in an email back to me, Warren or, or Middleburg. I'm telling you, it's all about timing and, and numbers.
Understood. Any other discussion on that topic?
I don't remember the instructor's name, but he said it was a group, they could hold it way out.
Michael Chandler, he's still doing it.
What's the next time, Mr. Chandler's still doing it?
So I believe the next item is a discussion of, in planning for our September thirtieth special meeting to review the comprehensive plan. Seems there have been a couple of items that have been mentioned already this evening that have been in this heading and we should make note of them, reviewing the commercial overlay section. And I believe in introducing this topic, Mr. Fraser mentioned that we should talk about what parts of the current draft we think need work, what the gaps are and how we go about them. Given that that meeting is focused on the comprehensive plan, I guess part of the request that came this evening to look at these interpretations related to the comprehensive plan.
Will it relate to the comprehensive plan and the current zoning ordinance?
Right, but again, if the focus of that meeting is on the comprehensive plan, I would suggest that the relevant part for that discussion would be whether these, as asked, whether these provisions are, you know, whether they seem consistent with the plan or whether these interpretations will drive a change in the plan. I don't think we want to turn this meeting, or at least we haven't, as it's been billed thus far, the purpose of that September thirtieth meeting is the comprehensive plan. If we, we can change that and say it's a meeting on, you know, the zoning ordinance provisions, but I believe up to this point, what we have decided and why we created that meeting was to enhance our ability to make progress on the comprehensive plan.
Right, but if I could, I know it may be something in phraseology there, but what we want is interpretations that are aligned with the comprehensive plan and zoning ordinance, not interpretations that will change the comprehensive plan and zoning ordinance.
Well, interpretations can't change a comprehensive plan or a zoning ordinance, they're different things.
They're changing the, the implication of it, the application of it, rather.
So I guess the question here, and, I mean, it seems to me that we need to decide, and, and I won't be chairing that meeting, so, but I guess we should discuss whether this is, you know, and Mr. Fraser, you're on this, you were there and I gather that this is a present matter, should this trump, if you will, the discussion of the comprehensive plan, or it seems to me that it's a different conversation.
Well, it's, it's all related because it's all zoning ordinance.
It's all, of course.
The supervisor would like the, the planning commission to comment on it. Obviously, if you don't feel that you have time to, to talk about it and make intelligent comments, then you're just not to press on without the planning commission's input.
Well, I guess the question also is it, with, is there any notification issues with changing that meeting at this stage? Because it seems to me.
It's a work session.
It's a work session to focus on updating the comprehensive plan, is how I've understood it. This would be a change from that, seems to me, if that's, if that's the path we take.
If, if all due respect, we're, we're still an advisory body, we can't make decisions at that meeting. Everything we do, we send it up to be approved by somebody else.
But we still have distinct functions, as you've pointed out several times. One of them is writing the comprehensive plan.
Exactly.
That was the purpose of this meeting. Are you suggesting that we depart, depart from that purpose and address this one?
It won't take very long to do this.
So that's a yes, you are suggesting that we change it.
Rather, if you're going to be pointed, just, if.
Okay, just trying to be understanding.
It won't take that long, if everybody would take this on and agreed a little bit, look at the code sections, it won't take us that long.
Okay, so you, your recommendation would be that we address this first, sounds like maybe that would be, so we've got potential items for that date and I think it would be helpful if we, have we made, have we given public notice of this work session?
It's been noted in the meetings and it's on board docs.
And is it clear that it, that it's specific to revisions of?
The comprehensive plan.
Updating the comprehensive plan. Well, it is a work session, that, so I'm, I'm okay with, you know, personally okay with changing it. I don't know, but it's my decision to make. Any other thoughts or items to, so it sounds like we would start with this for the, the plan as it is, as some drafts can announce, we start with these interpretive issues and we'll pine on those to the extent that we care to. We would talk about shortcomings of the plan, and I would say that would include reconciliation if there's an issue with the MAC, the o- commercial overlay. Any other specific items people would want to put forward that we can be planning for in that meeting? Seems to me that another idea would be to kind of walk through, it sounds like what's implied here is that we will walk through the current graphic and comprehensive plan and assess, basically assess where we are. So I would see that take place. Any other thoughts or discussion on that?
I won't, I won't be able to make it, but you want it to have force tape. When they drew up the, the original plan, they had a plan but no force tape. When they grew up, the, the original plan, they had a plan, but no foresight. They, when I read that back in the eighties, and the neighbors and I were together, I said they're trying to make Rattan a retirement community. They want it where people will come here to live, but people that are coming here are already aging. And now we have a problem where you're talking for first responders and all that, that people are getting up too old to do it. Only old people are coming here. Look at, look around you. Including me, you.
Hey now.
Crazy. Gentleman there.
I might be the, after Kate, I might be the youngest one here.
You could well be, yeah. But, uh, we want to do something to keep the young people here. Because you're a farming community, another thirty years when we are gone, our children are not coming back here to run those farms. So what are you going to be thirty years from now? I think you won't be a farming community.
Brushing brambles.
Right now, a farmer, if somebody in the household doesn't have a job some way else, he's not going to make it.
Actually, that was forty years ago, middle brother said, show him a successful farm, and he'll show you a man whose wife has a good paying job.
I grew up on a family farm here. At that time, you could just go and catch a chicken and take it to the store and trade it for what you wanted.
You could still be there tomorrow.
Anything else, anything else you could do to extend it? I'm running out of numbers, I'm going to motion to adjourn.
Have a second, a second, thank you. All in favor?
I don't want to cut.
Thank you, gentlemen.